Seventeen, two thousand and twenty, for a reconvening meeting. First, I'd like to start off with a call of order in roll call. Tim Lovelace.
Here.
Luanne Wallace.
Here.
Carl Ray.
Here.
David Eaton.
Here.
Steve Breeding.
Here.
Horace Christian.
Yeah, here.
And Rebecca Dye.
Here.
Ma'am, you have a call.
Okay. All right. Do I have a motion to go into executive session, closed session, for legal matters?
Make that motion.
What, you, what, Katie, is there anything else? What's the numbers?
Legal personnel, it would be thirty-seven, eleven, A, one, and seven and eight.
All right. Steve.
Y'all make that motion.
Okay, he's going to read it and then you can second it.
Do you agree?
Yeah, please, and then all.
Make a motion if we go into executive session to discuss legal matters pursuant to section two point two dash thirty-seven, eleven, A, number one, seven and eight.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, now we're all showing hands, right? Horace? Horace, yes, roll call. Carl?
Yes.
Uh, Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes. To come out of the executive session.
So move.
Do you have a second?
Say.
All right, David. All right, Lonzo, Karen. Oh, we have to vote, roll call, I keep forgetting. Horace?
Present.
Yes, yes, coming out of executive session. Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes. Thank you. Lonzo?
Thank you, ma'am chair. Certification of closed session. Pursuant to subsection two point two thirty-seven, twelve, D, of Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended, each member of the board of supervisors upon roll call certifies that to best of their knowledge only public business matters were or were lawfully exempt from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and only such public business matters that were identified in the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting by the board of supervisors. Any member of the board of supervisors who believes that there was departure from the requirements shall stay so prior to the vote indicating the substance of that departure in his or her judgment has taken place. Are there any supervisors who believe that the departure has taken place? Seeing none, if you agree that the matters heard, discussed, or considered during the closed meeting were pursuant only to the motions by which the closed meeting was convened, please signify by saying yea or yes. Tim Lovelace?
Yes.
Luanne Wallace?
Yes.
Carl Ray?
Yes.
Steve Breeding?
Yes.
David Eaton?
Yes.
Horace, Horace Christian?
Yes.
Rebecca Dye?
Yes.
Ma'am, you have approval to return to regular session.
Thank you, Mitch. All right, at this time, we'll stand up for the application and remain standing for the pledge, please, thank you. It's bound our heads. Thank you, dear Lord, for giving us another day. Thank you, Lord, for the blessings that you've bestowed upon us. Lead us, help us to make the decisions that are right for this county. Please watch over this county, this state, and this nation. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Put your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and living in just as for all.
All right, at this time, do we need to approve the agenda or make any amendments to the agenda, please?
We need to amend the agenda to address the.
If, if that, if you want to consider that, I would move to add the pre-application project coordination form.
Make a motion, we add the pre-application for the meat package, so.
Okay.
Second.
All right.
We have the, the, the.
Stock market.
Okay.
You revise to me.
No, no. All right, so Katie, we need to go ahead and approve that one. Do we need to add another thing? What do we, if we need to want, add anything else to the agenda?
Nothing that I know of, I mean, if there's anything.
I do. Uh, ma'am chair, I'd like to amend the agenda to place back on this agenda, the board members for the RIFA that we took off last month.
Okay, do we have a second to that?
I'll second it.
Who's that? David? All right, got that. Anything else? Anyone else?
Also, ma'am chair, I don't know if we need to amend the agenda on this, but there were some issues that we left off last time, and I'm, I know that we're continuing the meeting, so this was concerning a request from the planning commission and the GIS, and we did not address that, so do we amend the agenda for that or just take that back up?
Was it, was it taped?
No, we didn't even address it, but it's in our packet from.
I would just add it to the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, so I will request that we add that back to the agenda concerning the request from the Russell County Planning Commission that we skipped over.
I'll second it.
All right. Any, anything else that we need to add to the agenda?
Just a motion to approve the agenda.
Yeah.
Okay, is that okay?
Yeah. All right. Anything else anyone needs to add to the agenda at this time? All right, so we have, should we just do a blanket?
I think that's fine.
Motion to approve the agenda.
Agenda.
We approve the agenda as amended.
As amended, all right. We have a second. David. All right, we will vote to add these items under new business. The pre-application for the stock market, the CIFA appointments, the GIS. Gentlemen, do y'all want to put your appointees for your tourism, which I want to add that?
Yes.
Can we add that one now?
Yeah, I just need a new motion.
I'll make a motion to add the tourism appointments.
Appointments, okay. Do we have a second for that?
Say.
Steve, all right. Now, we have a motion to add to the agenda, the pre-application of the stock market, put the CIFA appointments back on the agenda, look at the GIS from the planning commission from last board meeting, and to add the appointments to the tourism committee. All right, and we have a motion by Steve and a second by David to amend their agenda. All those in favor, vote for four new items. Horace?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca? Yes, so we will add four new things.
Oh, that's wild.
All right, now, our next item is to open the floor for our public hearing on the Russell County Fiscal Year Plan twenty twenty-one for our budget. Floor's now open. For public. Nobody's there? All right. All right, we will close the hearing on our budget. And I do want to say, and we have to vote and do roll call? I keep forgetting that roll call. Horace? Close the public hearing?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes, no comment. But I will say on my behalf that we have met and we've talked with all the county agencies. It is level funding, the same as the budget was last year and the year before. We, we don't have a lot of money, so we're not spending a lot of money. All right, our new business, next item, is the Russell County Emergency Operation Plan.
Ma'am chairman, I think you need to vote to approve the budget.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm forgetting it. Thank you, Katie, I appreciate you. All right, uh, need a motion and everybody to vote, correct?
So move.
All right, Tim, we have a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Budget.
Budget, budget, I'm stuck on that agenda, young. All right, a second?
Second.
Lou? All right, all those in.
Any discussion?
In discussion, okay, go ahead.
I don't think it's totally level, as I looked at it, we had a few cuts.
Flares.
It's flared, yeah.
One point four percent less.
Yeah, yeah, overall, it's one point four percent less. There've been a few cuts in different, some, some categories are level and some are not, you know, it wasn't major cuts anywhere, it didn't look like, maybe two point six percent is the worst I saw.
Fitness center.
Maybe a treasurer office.
Fitness, fitness center. Fitness center was something like that.
Yeah.
Would it be appropriate for me to ask that the Paul Phil Castlewood was included in it?
That would be, that would be with the school board, and I don't think it, it wasn't.
Wasn't presented to us.
No, it wasn't presented to us. No.
The school board didn't present it?
No.
I had some board members, school board members asked about that.
No.
It wasn't in the budget that was presented.
No.
So it's marked off.
Yeah, they didn't come and ask, they didn't have it there.
The school was level funded from last year.
Yeah.
Now they get a lot of.
Well, it wasn't.
You never have much money.
Dr. Brown told someone, saying, when we went to him, that if they didn't build either Paul Phil, Eleven, Castlewood, and this field would be renovated, and that's what they were hoping to be in the budget, so they couldn't renovate those two, Paul Phil, so it wasn't, okay.
Which, which if I made it, the, the school board presents a budget, but as far as you don't approve individual line items, this board doesn't, you approve debt service and operations, and then how they allocate their budget is up to them.
So they would have, these people would have to ask Dr. Brown if that was included.
Yeah, you, you all would have no control over that.
I'm saying, we, but their, their people would have to.
Yeah, right. Okay. Anything else, Steve, you have a comment? Okay, all right, now we will vote and roll call. Uh, Tim and Lou?
I do, I, I second.
Tim, make the motion, and Lou, second, all right? Roll call to approve the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget. Horace?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca? Yes. All right. All right, yes, Lonzo, would you like to read the amounts and things for us, please?
Yes, ma'am. A resolution to approve the budget as amended, appropriate funds of the county of Russell and the Russell County School Division for the fiscal year beginning July the first two thousand and twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Whereas, the Budget slash Finance Committee has submitted to the Russell County Board of Supervisors a proposed annual budget for the county for the fiscal years beginning July the first twenty twenty, ending June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, which has been reviewed by the Board of Supervisors. And it is, whereas it is necessary to adopt said budget in appropriate funds to cover the required requirements included herein, and whereas the board supervisors in exercising its independent judgment and concern, concern, concert with Virginia School Board as considered the school's annual operating budget. And whereas, after considering the availability of local funds, approval of the Russell County School Board fiscal year two thousand and twenty, twenty-one educational budget is based upon the funding from the federal government in an amount of five million, one hundred fifty-six thousand, five hundred seventy-five dollars, from the state government in an amount of thirty million, one hundred and one thousand, one hundred and three dollars, and from the local appropriations in an amount of nine million, one hundred and one, three hundred and seventeen dollars, and local revenues in an amount of seven hundred and fifty-three thousand. Be it further resolved that the annual budget in the sum of one million, nine, eight hundred ninety-six thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight in the fiscal year of twenty twenty-one be and hereby is approved for the operation of food service authorized by, and approved by the Russell County School Board, subject to and contingent upon the availability of funds. Be it further, be it still further resolved that nine million, one hundred and one, three hundred and seventeen appropriated from the general fund for education includes eight million, twenty-four thousand, seven hundred and eighty-one for local contribution to the school division in support of the school operation budget. Be it still further resolved that the annual appropriation in the sum of one million, seventy-six thousand, five hundred and thirty-six for fiscal year twenty twenty-one be and hereby is made for the school's debt service, with a total of nine million, one hundred and one thousand, three hundred and seventeen dollars appropriated for the Russell County School Division, subject to and contingent upon the availability of funds. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Russell County Board of Supervisors this seventeenth day of June twenty twenty, at the fiscal year of two thousand and twenty-one, a twenty and twenty-one annual budget of the Russell County School Division for the school's operations in an amount of forty-seven million, eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and is hereby approved subject and continued upon availability of funds as indicated in the preamble here too. Be it, be it still further resolved that the following annual appropriations for the school year twenty twenty-one be and hereby made in the general fund for the following functions. The total general fund is twenty-five million, seven ninety-two, nine fifty-eight. Be it still further resolved that the county administrator hereby authorized to transfer their appropriations to the general fund for non-funcions to the related categories of various functions. Be it further resolved that the annual appropriations in the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand for fiscal year twenty twenty-one hereby be made to the CRO. Be it first still further resolved that the annual appropriation in the sum of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand for year twenty twenty-one and hereby made by, to the Southwest Virginia ASAP Fund. Be it still further resolved that the annual appropriation in the sum of five million, two hundred and ten, nine hundred and eighty for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one is hereby made to, to the Social Security Fund for the Russell County Department of Social, Department of Social Services, and is hereby approved subject to and continues upon the availability of funds in the indicated preamble here too. Be it still further resolved that the annual appropriations of the Social Services Fund be and is hereby increased if and when additional funds or state funds or local contributions become available, the county administrator shall advise the board of supervisors in writing of such actions. Be it still further resolved that the annual appropriation of the sum of one, one million, seven hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one be and is hereby made in the Comprehensive Service Act Fund, and is hereby approved subject to and contingent upon the availability of funds as indicated in the preamble here too. Be it, be it still further resolved that the county treasurer upon receipt of written order from the county administrator's order to advance funds between several of the county funds under his custody provided, however, that the total advance to any particular fund plus the amount of funds dispersed from that fund does not exceed the appropriation of said fund. Be it still further resolved that the county administrator shall and is hereby authorized to do all things necessary to apply federal and state library aid fund in addition to the annual appropriation for library operations. Be it still further resolved that the county treasurer shall be and is hereby authorized to implement a service fee for credit and debit card payments. Be it still further resolved that upon receiving notice of grant and/or appropriation opportunities by various federal, state, and local and other outside organizations, the county administrator is designated, be and is hereby designated as the agent to execute the necessary grant program applications and other documents unless the terms of the grant or the program requirement, specific actions of the board to give such assurances as may be required by the agreement, subject to the approval, as to form, invite, legal review, and to provide such additional information as may be required by the awarding organization. Funding awards shall be subject to appropriation by the board of supervisors prior to the expenditure. Be it still further resolved that the interest earned on grant and program awards received from federal, state, and local, other outside organization be and hereby appropriated, and to the appropriation, to appropriate function area be expanded, expended in accordance with the guidelines as established by the organization. Be it still further resolved that the additional funds received for various county programs, including contributions and donations be and hereby appropriated to the purpose of establishing each program. Be it still further resolved that funds received for off-duty employment by deputy sheriff programs be and hereby appropriated to end to the general fund to cover costs of such program. Be it still further resolved that upon receipt of written notification from the State Compensation Board of additional funds for the Constitution Office, Commonwealth Attorney, Sheriff, Clerk of the Court, Treasurer, Commissioner of Revenue be and hereby appropriated in the general fund to be expended in accordance with the guidelines as established by the state government. Be it still further resolved that the annual contributions that there are hereby appropriated shall be dispersed on a monthly basis with the amount dispersed not to exceed one twelfth of the total appropriation unless otherwise agreed. Contributions to the Russell County School Division and the Russell County Department of Social Services are exempt from this limitation. In addition, the county administrator will require written reports on how previous allocations were spent before any future disbursements are made. Be it still further resolved that the funds be and hereby appropriated for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one in various funds for continued capital and special projects and grants as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one not to exceed the restricted committed or assigned fund balances as reported in the county, the county records. The county administrator shall advise the board of supervisors in writing of all such actions. Be it still further resolved that the county administrator be and hereby is authorized to transfer funds within appropriate, within the appropriation functions. These transfers may be made to allow the dispersment of funds for anticipated costs incurred in the daily county operations, and such transfer may not result in a change to the total appropriate within the functions. Be it still further resolved that the county administrator is hereby the authorized signer for the county PITA cash account available for the emergency purchases of the daily county operations. Be it further, still further resolved that board of supervisors may amend this budget to adjust the aggregate amount to be appropriated during the current fiscal year as prescribed by subsection fifteen point two dash twenty-five oh seven, the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty, as amended for all Russell County departments, Russell County School Divisions, and Russell County Constitution Officer. Resolved the seventeenth day of June two thousand and twenty by the following vote.
Thank you, sir.
And to sum it up, it is a reduction of the county budgets, like we said, of one point seven six percent, total of one point four percent. This is not an increase in any taxation of, of any kind within this, we came within budget, and as y'all know, a lot of meeting with a lot of the departments and the board of supervisors to be able to make these numbers, a lot of counties have not been this successful. So, again, what we had discussed during the budget meetings and the workshops, we'll be working on a monthly basis to make sure that Russell County stays within what our means are and our financial means are throughout the year. Thank you, board.
I know that was long, but I want to be invited here, we, we're off schedule, we didn't get to have folks out. All right, next, is Jase out there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, next with our new business is Mr. Jase Powers, discussing the Russell County Emergency Operation Plan.
Every year, every four years, our emergency operations plan has to be revised and re-adopted by the board. This is by state code. And it goes by state code that this emergency operations plan was developed. And it is a little tweaked for our region because we're not in Richmond or Northern Virginia where we have access to a lot of services that we need assistance with. So, have you had a chance to look at the emergency operations plan and have any questions?
I did. Pretty standard, it's five hundred pages. I did not read every page, I will tell you that. I read the chain of command, basically what you have to do, how you have to do it, so yes, but I will confess, five hundred pages is a lot to cut, Jase, and I appreciate your work on it.
If you look at the emergency support functions in the back, I developed a checklist of the responsibilities for each agency, and we're the only emergency operations plan in the state that has that checklist. So V doc can go to their emergency support function and check off items that they're responsible to do during an emergency. If I go to the emergency management, section five of the emergency support function, there's a list of what emergency management is supposed to do. Under the help department, under the emergency support function number eight, I've got a checklist for them. So it brings all of the nineteen different agencies throughout the state under our plan with a checklist, and it's a really good tool. You know, we're supposed to coordinate during an emergency, every agency, including the volunteer agencies. And that's, I've been able to recruit Red Cross volunteers to respond to fires, now that I don't have to go to each individual fire, I have volunteers that will go after I coordinate what they should do. You know, I see the call from dispatch, I send the text message to them from the text messages that I receive from dispatch and say, are you available to go to this call? And what services do you need once you get there? So that has saved a lot of overtime for me in training these volunteers to help me respond to emergencies.
I would like to make a motion to send Congressman Griffith the latter on the federal side to, to look at the reduction of that cap that we have to meet the mandate, Jase, I talked to you about this in detail. I think they're going to have to take a hard look at that for rural Virginia because we will never meet that mandate unless it's just, it, it would take my and Lou and Carl's district out and for us to come up to that cap, and where our districts are along the riverside and we have all this flooding, if you don't mind to expel on the total amount, I would like to make a motion to send him a letter in regards to trying to get that reduced for rural areas of Virginia.
Our damage, total, private and public, was seven hundred and two thousand dollars. And I was able to work at the EOC, and Carl actually went, and you and Lonzo, we all worked together as a team to gather that information because we have forty-eight hours to get that information.
Right.
And input it in within seventy-two hours of an incident. So it was all we could do is just get the information, and then we still done, we met our local Russell County threshold.
Right.
By sevenfold, but the state did not meet their threshold to push it up to FEMA where we can get the individual assistance that is so badly needed here.
I agree.
I mean, if you look at Swords Creek, Clark's Valley, that area, two thousand and eighteen, how many times, Dave, did we go out there?
A lot.
We, it was six times.
Yeah.
In a couple of months, but because we didn't even meet the local threshold then.
Right.
But you saw the damage, and it's recurring damage.
We, we've got a motion.
Okay.
Second.
I'll second it.
All right, and Carl? Is second it? So now you can discuss.
The February sixth flood just about took out Homeacre, Cleveland, Dane.
Right.
Those were extremely hit hard areas, and with, you know, the, even the county suffered a lot of damage, three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars worth of damage to our PSA and, and our U two, our buildings. Look at the Cleveland Community Center had a foot of water in it. The Dane Community Center was flooded twice, but those people in Dane, they, they, they came like an army. Mrs. Gullett, I think Bobby Gullett, she was there and she was sweeping and mopping and, and they, they prevented a lot of damage from that facility from being damaged. And even on the second flood, she was there and the, the volunteers were there, and they kept that building from getting flooded.
Most of these people, like what we toured and had to cross the creek to get insulin and all that, I mean, these, these people helped us.
Yes, sir.
I mean, they're helpless, and, and if you don't ever meet that criteria out there where you get public assistance, I mean, there's just, there's nothing that anybody can do, and I just think they're going to have to look at our area differently and lower that criteria of funding. I mean, it's hard to ask them to take a review of it.
It would be great if they would look at it as a region. Because Virginia differs a lot from region to region. The southwest region, it goes from Carroll County to Lee to Buchanan up to. The southwest region that goes from Carroll County to Lee to Buchanan up to Giles County, it's a large geographic area, but we're mostly mountainous and we're rural. And what affects us doesn't affect Northern Virginia. And what affects Northern Virginia, like this COVID virus, look how bad it's been there. And look at us here in the rural community with eight cases that we have been able to confirm versus, you know, thousands of cases.
All right, with that being said, we've had a first, this second in discussion, so we'll do a roll call vote to write a letter to Mr. Griffith to see if he can help reduce the cap on our threshold in this local area. So Boris, are you in favor of this letter?
Yes.
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes, ma'am.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca?
Yes.
One thing we want to make sure that the state level is dropped by a region so that we don't have to meet the twelve point eight million dollars when we had seven point eight million dollars in damage from this last flood. So we kind of need to look at it like a region
Right.
because, you know, if something happens, if a tornado touches down in Northern Virginia Fairfax County, it's going to cause twelve million dollars of damage very quickly. Versus Portsmouth that had a tornado a couple of years ago, that was eighteen million dollars and it only damaged thirty homes.
I think you probably need to take a look at this and kind of put it into how you feel. You're the one who needs to probably put this together, the letter, how you feel and what you look, what you think, Tim.
I could have had a lot of data today.
Yeah, brilliant, that'd be good.
All right, so Jess, do you need a motion from us to accept your plan and you, it has to be sent by the first of July, is that correct?
It's due in July, so it's not really due by the first of July.
But, okay. But you do need a motion for us to approve it and have you sent it?
And the reason is that we have it in at the end of June. That's because we have new board members. And we wanted the new board members to be familiar with the board operation for six months before they even had to look at the emergency operations plan. However, because of the floods on February the sixth, April the thirteenth, April the twenty-eighth, and COVID and all the hazmat incidents, we have been rolling since February the sixth. And Carl's had a good baptism. He's had a full dunking in emergency management. Because of all the disasters we have and Boris too, I know Boris is new to the board, but it's all been new to him and we have to get things rolling quickly. Because if we don't move them quickly, we don't get the funding, we don't get consideration. It took us, what, six days before we could get VDoc in to verify the information that we had uploaded on their web EOC. And this is the document that we use to manage an incident. If we follow this emergency operations plan, then the liability is very low to the county if something happens. You know, something's always going to happen, but the liability of the county by adopting this plan falls on the state's liability.
All right, do we have a motion to accept this emergency management operation plan?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Carl, thank you. A second?
I'll say it.
All right, Boris, any further discussion? All those in favor of the plan? Boris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca?
Yes.
Thank you much, Jess. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you, guys. I know it's a lot to read.
Light reading.
And with the, all the disasters we've had, we had to develop this plan again. And always the state changes the format every, every four years. And we have always met the state requirements with our plan since I've been on, in emergency management, with the board's help. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you so much.
Make sense, Jess.
All right, next we have our citizens' comment period. Jess, is it no one?
No.
No one's in the lobby?
Dave, please.
Okay. All right, saying none, we'll move on. Our constitutional officers. Well, we were going to have our new business. I'm sorry, I'm about to skip that. We did amend our agenda. So the first one, Steve, you had the first thing to amend on the agenda?
Yes, sir. I need our attorney to make a recommendation as to how this motion needs to be made.
Regarding the pre-application project coordination form for the, regarding the pre-application project coordination form for the livestock market, it's just a one-page application that details just the beginning process of this and it would be for five hundred thousand dollars. And if you all wish to go forward with this project, I suggest that you move to request the program's state funding and to approve this pre-application project form and authorize the county administrator to sign that, sign this. And also part of moving, and part of moving forward with this project would be that if the grant is approved, that it will only be accepted when a letter of credit is issued by Mr. Leonard.
Sumoed.
So you did run that right, Steve? All right. Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Tim? All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor of the pre-application being sent? Boris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca?
No.
All right, the second item we had was to put the CIFA appointments back on the agenda. So do we have any motions for the two, there's two seats available for the CIFA board, that is the regional IDA.
Chairman, I'd like to nominate David Eaton.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate yourself, Rebecca Taylor-Dye to that seat.
Any others? All right, we'll vote on these in reverse order. All those for Rebecca Dye on the CIFA board, please raise your hand.
I think you'll have to take the roll call.
Roll call, too, okay. Boris?
Yes.
Carl?
No.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
No.
Steve?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
All right, all those for David, hand and roll call. All those for David on the CIFA board? Boris?
No.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
No.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
Rebecca?
No.
All right. Now we have a second seat. We have a, any more, any nominations for the second seat that we have? And they do recommend that we try to spread this out, one from the board of supervisors and one from our local county IDA.
Let's nominate Ernie, fair enough.
Okay. David, all right, Ernie, all right, anyone else?
I'd like to nominate Tony Doughty.
All right. Anyone else? All right, we will vote on these in reverse order again. Those, and raise your hand, please, those for Tony Doughty. Boris?
Yes.
Carl?
No.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
No.
Steve?
No.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
All right, those for Mr. Eaton. David, raise your hand and voice vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Foden, I'm sorry, I've written it down in the wrong place. Ernie, thank you. Tim, I was looking at the wrong place. Okay, Boris for Ernie?
No.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
No.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
No.
And Rebecca?
No.
So our two new members will be Rebecca Dye and Tony Doughty. All right, let's see, we've made some more. Next was the, Lou asked us to go back and look at the GIS that the Russell County Planning Commission had discussed. So Lou, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, I didn't pull it up from our former board book. I'm still on the board book for today. But basically, the planning commission had asked that the board of supervisors approve, I'm staming it, the thirty-five hundred dollars, is that it? And Rick, have you got that pulled up, Lonzo, that you could read to us? I'm sorry, I should have done it exactly what their request was. But nonetheless, while you're working on that, let me make a few comments on this. Our GIS is kind of in need of re-upping, I guess you would say, and it's very difficult for the real estate industry, the engineering industry, land surveying industry, all these folks that need to work. And we have experienced some of these problems during this COVID time. And, but anyway, I didn't even, I did not even see, catch that and talk to the madam chair about this, that this was a request from the planning commission that we just overlooked. And so it was brought to my attention that they had made some recommendations and they sent up this request to us. Have you found it yet? So we pay thirty-five hundred dollars a year for this system, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
No.
That would just be maintenance on the system.
Yes, that's it.
The maintenance on the system.
Yeah, and I know the GIS costs a lot more than that.
Well, they're asking, and I can't remember exactly what it is that they're asking for, but,
Isn't that, well, maybe I just better be quiet until we, in the session. Go ahead, go ahead.
No, I'm, 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 I've already said enough as it is. There it is.
There it is. Me, enlarge this a little. This is, there we go.
They're asking for a waiver of the user fees, is what they're asking for. The current cost is thirty-five hundred dollars and they're asking for a waiver of the user fees is what this request is. But inside this request, I'm saying that I have complained to Lonzo and to Rebecca that our system is a dinosaur practically. And we, we really need to look at trying to do something with this. And in this conversation, did we not have some sort of funding along the way that you, have you found out anything about that?
Lonzo, I had asked him to check to see what the county, surrounding counties do and to see what an upgrade on our system would be. What this allows is for the realtors, our engineers, our surveyors to look at our GIS, use it to see the boundaries, the properties, the surveys of land in our county. So if it's all right with the rest of the board, we'll task Lonzo with going to see what other counties do. Yes.
Wasn't that new software already installed, that new GIS system that we approved, what, a couple of years ago?
The, you talk about the pictometry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Now, the,
That was tied to GIS.
It is tied to the GIS, but, yes, that was for the assessors. Yes, yes, that's correct. And the GIS systems, every county has one. And some of them have different levels of, of being layers like Ms. Dye says, to be able to utilize it. You have some that can go on for free. If you go to Washington County's, residential's can go in and look at it, pull up their property and see what it is and what the square footage and age and all that. And then they have another layer that's accessible by engineers and realtors to be, and they charge a fee for that. And they usually contract that out to a private third party.
Attorneys.
Yes, attorneys, yes, that whole group that has to use it. It gives them access to the deep books and it gives them access to the plaits and the square footage, things that they would not have to pay for if they went out and had it surveyed. You know, if it's been assessed lately, they could use that, you know, as the survey with the bank and et cetera. It carries a lot of information. And there's different models that every county does. Some do theirself internally, which we do, Russell County. It's very antiquated. Actually, when we were doing the Belfast project and we were sitting in there with the HCD, since the Belfast project was doing, being done by state force, I mean county force, sorry about that old days, county forces, they had an eighty thousand dollar surplus in there. And one of the things that Cameron from DHC mentioned is we could upgrade our GIS system, include the water in the sewer, the utilities to be able to upgrade that. So during the negotiations, and I reached out and I'm trying to get hold of Cameron Platteau, and the DHC granted six hundred and thirty thousand, what DHC wanted was to take it out of the coal money that was given, to use that, but use theirs to extend as many customers you can get based off the six hundred and thirty thousand dollar grant to the DHC. So I'm trying to reach out to Debbie Milton right now and see what, how we're going to work that out to see if we could take that and maybe look at a third-party carrier contract or upgrade the internal one. So that's, that's what I've done so far.
So, so you're going to get back to us with the levels of,
Yes, sir.
using, or be like a freeman for just citizens?
Different models.
And the higher level would be? Because they do that in Wise County, don't they?
Yes.
Jack Kennedy's got a fairly elaborate assessment.
Every, everywhere that my husband's company works is, he said he had experience with Smith County and they're doing a certain level. And we understand that it's going to have to be in levels, but I think that this is a great service for everyone, particularly, I have noticed a lot of people using the Wise County site over in the St. Paul area for home purchases because they're all looking at this. And you can go as deep as you want to go in this, some of this stuff. But I think that we're not offering what we need to offer to some of our citizens and I would really like to look at this a little differently. So we're the, I think we're the only county that doesn't have a thing that, that they offer their, the services of trying to look up this stuff.
And it needs to see how, what, how many layers, how deep it is, what services, if they charge for something. We have a slight one now and they pay a hundred dollars a year to use it.
Yeah, it's limited. Is real estate?
No, I mean, actually, you pull up the GIS and you can look at people's property and maps.
Their fences, how much yard, all that, they're not correct.
I was going to say, there's a disclaimer on that.
They've,
Those are the beach marks. Yes. And this is the letter right here from DHC that we had on the second line, and if you watch my little cursor here, it says, and this is on the Belfast water extension, the CDVG project. You can choose to reprogram the balance of the award of eighty thousand to help other projects related to houses. One example that I want to share is the use of the GIS map to, you know, map your water systems. So we can use this to do your gas, your water, your sewer. And a lot of the other counties that have, this could be a partial assistance in upgrading the program. Either you go to a third-party carrier contractor or upgrade the in-county house program.
If that's only each real state, real thorough engineer whatever pays a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year and they got the whole length of that year to give that service, why would it be a hardship on them to pay a hundred and twenty-five dollars?
To pay a fee for a hundred and twenty-five dollars, anyone that's having an appraisal or any title searches or deed or, this is, this is well worth its while, Ms. Wallace would tell you.
A year, it's for a year.
Oh, they have to do that each time they use it?
No, it's a four-year use.
One hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Four-year service.
I know they brought that up in the planning commission, March maybe. And I talked about the other counties, I said, well, those, to my understanding, those counties get coal service tax money while Russell County gets little if any, and that makes a difference. tax money, or Russell County gets little if any, and that makes a difference, doesn't it? But, you know, I'm not experiencing nothing, though, to me, if you use it very often, it don't look like a hundred and twenty-five dollars would be a hardship in a year of time, but you can use it seven days, six days a week, five days a week, or whatever. Maybe I don't know enough about.
That's something we had asked him to look at for us and come back next month with some information about the surrounding counties, what it would cost to upgrade it and that type of thing. So anyone else have any comment? Anybody else need to say anything? Do you think that's feasible to look at that? Okay, Lonzo, you've been tasked with checking on that to see what it can be. And there's lots of realtors and engineers and surveyors that, lawyers that would benefit from.
Just regular citizens, just regular citizens.
Just regular citizens.
And the county would benefit too.
Yes.
Yes.
It would.
Yeah, I mean, if we had our assets in, in, in the G I S completely, like a lot of other counties, upgraded too.
I'm sure the P S A would like to be able to have a layer that says, here is where our fire hydrants are, here's our pump stations, here's, I mean, this is, and this would be important for emergencies also, when we're having these devastating floods and our, our infrastructures being washed out, those would be able to access and know where all that is.
The one I looked at from Washington County, it, it, it went into the different layers on the map, but one of the good things, the water, sewer, gas, ports, infrastructures, it also had the voting districts, it had the residential districts, it had the flood plain into it, which is, I mean, it was comprehensive, it, I mean, it was a one-place shop aisle once you get in there at that level for a contract. I mean, what it would do for you, you would make your money in, in one sale, I mean, way beyond above it, they had the, the current assessment on it. It also had everywhere every county facility was for emergency management, it had it plotted out, and you could, you could drill down and map whatever you wanted. Very, very beneficial.
Well, thank you, that's what you've, we've sent you to do that for us for next month, please check that out.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, the next thing with our amended agenda, we have two positions open on our tourism. One is in Mr. Breeding's district and one is in David's district. Gentlemen, do y'all have any nominations for your, to fill your spots?
I'd like to nominate Victoria Gent to fill that position on the TAC, assuming she will still accept it.
Yep. All right, anyone else see for that? Any discussion, anyone? That's, all right, that's your one position, he has one, so let's vote on that. All for Victoria in Steve's district for the TAC Committee. Oris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. So Ms. Victoria, we hope she will accept this, she's an excellent worker. All right, David has a position open also with the resignation. Do we need to accept Jeff's resignation first?
I, I guess so, yeah.
Yep, okay. David, do you want to make a motion to accept Jeff's resignation?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to accept Jeff's resignation.
All right. All right, are those in favor accepting his? Wait a second.
Second.
Second, Steve, thank you. All right. Oris, you accepting Jeff's resignation?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, now, David, you have one position open, do you have a nominee for that?
Yes.
Fill that vacancy.
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Jamie Ball, which actually lives in Rosedale, but they have ball trucking officer in Homeacre and the, and the Log Yard, H and H, so I'd like to nominate Jamie.
All right, good choice.
Make a motion that nomination seats and Jamie be. And a biacclamation.
All right. Katie, good. All right, all those in favor of Jane?
That wasn't a second, Tim's motion.
Second, Tim's motion?
Second.
Steve, all right, all right, I keep forgetting we have to raise hand, all those in favor of Tim's motion, correct? Jane, and say Jamie biacclamation?
Well, you still, he made the motion to do that, so we're about to vote for that.
For that one first, all right. On Tim's, a motion for voting acclamations. Oris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right. Now, put Jamie's name out again, all right?
No, no. That's all you have to do.
That's fine, that's what I said. All right. That's all with our amended agenda. Next is constitutional officers' reports and requests. Second, now, we'll move on to our county attorney report and request.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The only thing that we have on the agenda under me tonight is, is the Waste Management Authority. At the last meeting, the board approved the user agreement subject to approving the final operation agreement. I'm still working with the other localities and the attorney for the Waste Management Authority. We, we have a conference call, hopefully planned next week, and hopefully we'll be able to finalize all of this.
All right. Next we have is our county administrators' reports and requests.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The first one is the one that's near and dear to a lot of people in the county, is on the county administrator reports and requests, is the Homeacre and the Castlewood Cannery opening. Right now, we have it tentatively scheduled, we have talked with both the staff at both of the Homeacre and the Canneries, and we are doing all the state guidelines for cleaning and making sure that we, we continue this and we've got all the signage up and et cetera. We have it slated to open up on July the fourteenth. Because we know that a lot, a lot of people are doing their self-guarding this year and canning. One, one of the things that I'm going, I'm going to bring up and at the board's discretion is a majority of, of the residents have transitioned to utilizing jars. And currently, right now, the inventory is very low for cans, so right now, that's at the option of the board. I can order them right now, believe it or not, even in COVID, I can get them within seven to ten days. So, and I can go down to a partial load up into, you know, minimum of two pallets. So in what that would cost, that would be those cans, the cost of the cans, cost of lids, and cost of transportation would be, would be paid by those citizens when they utilize the cans. It would be at cost, we don't make anything, it's exact, it's just a pass-through cost to the residents if they want to use them, but a lot of people are looking at using this for various vegetables and meats, so it's up to the discretion of the board supervisors.
Well, you're going to have a lot more people using the cannery this year. I guarantee you that, there's a lot of gardens out, and I've been heard through the grapevine that people want to know when the date, the time, and how long you're going to keep it open. Because you're going to have, I think you're going to have a lot of people canning food.
I think so, also something that we may have to add a day, I think, if we get really into it. And I think we need, you know, probably three pallets of each one, that's just what I'm going to suggest.
Everybody's got a garden.
Yeah, everybody's got a garden. Do you know the cost yet, Lonzo? Do you have any idea? Have you heard? Have you checked yet?
When we, when we called, when we called Ball Cannery, which is the one that still has it, and I'd like to give an update through the Tobacco Commission of us to retrofit the cans, when the COVID hit, the Tobacco Commission on the grants that were eligible for upgrading the equipment both in both canneries to get a cheaper can in, in being able to give them that choice, the Tobacco Commission had went back and looked at their funding and are going project by project. Actually, the Cannery Committee sent me their refined list today, and she's, they sent it on back to the Tobacco Commission. The Tobacco Commission representative in, in Amityton is working very close with us, so we're going to, we're going to start that process back, and we've been planning for this, and we've got the facilities retrofitted, we've just been waiting on the equipment and the money. So in the meantime, we can buy enough cans, I don't want to buy enough, two cans if they give us to go ahead and buy the equipment, we're, we're going to purchase it and we're our, we've got the electrical and the rest set up to implement this. So I don't want to get too much into one set of cans if we can utilize the cheaper set of cans for the residents. So we'll, we'll, we'll run that based off of what we can do through ball and delivery, we'll keep an eye on that one for you. The, it's back to the extra time. Now, that's another thing the board has considered, do you, do you add on an extra day or do you add on additional hours during the day that are open? So that's something, that, that does not have to be decided tonight.
We could go back and ask our folks what they like and what they want.
Yes, they give you an opportunity to really talk to, you know, who's going to be using this. So, and we can make a movement, a motion on that at the July board meeting to see what you want in each of the areas, because, and we've got to remember, they're going to be coming in from out of county, because they're, they know that Russell County's got the only two canneries in Southwest Virginia. So there's going, you got, we're going to have to make sure, we need to look at the rates that we charge out of county residents, look at the hours that we're going to be doing in the cans, and we'll get the equipment in place, so.
You need to look at priority, give in-county people priority and priority.
Yes, absolutely.
Yes, and I do, I agree with David, we need to order, make sure we have plenty of those cans for our folks. So that could be, we can discuss that in July, ask everybody how many they think they'll need and what we, what we can have.
Dave, how can we do that unless it be by appointment? You have, you know, make sure.
They have to go by appointment anyway, don't they?
Yeah, they got to by appointment anyway, yeah.
They don't just show up, they have to call, make.
I've been over here since I used a cannery, but I didn't.
Probably use when they're home.
I didn't want to keep it open all the time.
Yeah.
They'll call and say, I'm coming at eight o'clock, and the ladies are there to help them.
It wouldn't hurt to put something out there in the paper to let them know that they can go ahead and pre-schedule at the cannerys. It wouldn't hurt to go ahead and put it on our site, or. Well, I mean, most of the ones that utilize it anyway, most of them that utilize it know the times, it's going to be harvesting a lot, they're pretty close to get to it, and if they know they need to get in the gate quickly to schedule a time.
What I'd worry about, though, is somebody just schedules up much time.
Well, yeah, I mean, it'd have to be, they have to be there, I mean, you know, through, through those times, but I don't know, I don't know how you make that work, like Steve said, but I just think that if you can let them know when the cannery is going to be opened and the harvesting time, there's a window there of harvesting that we always recognize, and if you got to keep it open later, if you have twenty people calling and say, I need to schedule it, you might have to put them in, you know, implements through the week. It wouldn't be through the hours, it'd be, you'd have to, that meaning you'd have to get them in different days, probably.
Yeah, and, and that's one of the two things you can either look at adding a day or extending the hours, but the cannerys, and I don't want to compare two different operations, it's going to be like the disposal operations, it's going to go through, it's going to go quick and fast, and they're going to be standing there. Where are we getting calls on this? You know, we get daily, when is the cannery's open, when are the cannery's open, so we've got it ready, operationally ready to go, you know, and we can get the cans in and sufficient enough time to be able to do this. But we're going, we don't want to get caught with the volume, and y'all get calls that we're, we're standing out here and I can't get in, I'm a resident, and, and I've got thirty from Washington County trying to use it that's in front of me, so.
Still set for July fifteenth?
Fourteen, fourteen.
What about the chiller, Lonzo, is it up and running?
The chiller, the, we, we brought in additional air compressors, I've had Brady, our H V C expert, he's already ordered parts for the, the Homeacre to up, to get that up and running, so everything's being ordered, this will be up and moving by the time we open. Thank you. Yes, sir. So I will proceed, I will have, I will go ahead and order the cans enough for at least, at least a forty-five day, that's what Ball was recommended, is at least a forty-five day supply, that way you, you have both cannerys, so that's, that's there.
Did, did, did those statistics show a lot of people switched over to glass jars? That's what I saw.
And they did, and they did, Steve, and, and, but, and both, we can read it with tape, we get calls on them every day, and they're switching to the meat, and one of the things about the meat, it has got to be canned, and it's just, they're way, this, you know, Southwest Virginia way of canning.
And the current.
And it's, it's, yes, and kraut. I don't know, the kraut is another big one, so just to be on the same side, the thing about it is, if you get these, even under the new equipment that we get from the Tobacco Commission, they would use the ball cans, so we will not lose anything on this, it'll only be passed on what they use.
Well, one thing different than the jars and the cans, I give everybody a little humor, my oldest boy's twenty-six, when he was little, we canned at the cannery, we decided to take masking tape, put on the jars, and write on what we can, we brought them home, we were excited, we put them in a cabinet, we turned J.J. loose, he goes and plays in the cabinet, in the cabinet, he takes all the tape off all the cans, and so we didn't know what was eaten, so we just had to guess when we opened the can, so I would advise anybody, if you're going to permanent, use a permanent marker, don't use masking.
We still got some cans. No. So at the pleasure of the board, I will advertise and put on our website, we've got a great following on our Facebook, especially during COVID now, I think we got a, you know, I think we got seventeen thousand in the county that's absolutely watching this, so I'll hit all the media sites and the papers, and we'll put a notice out when these are open. And that, make sure you consider looking and talking to the constituents, make sure of additional hours or additional days, and we can decide that the next board. Next on the county administrator, that was all the county administrator reports, the next is county administrator request, and this is actually concerning the town of Cleveland, this is the Cleveland Sewer System Planning Grant that mentioned at the previous board. This is the agreement of the C D G B B Planning Grant, this is the next phase into the Planning Grant for them to do the P E R and to give an analysis on what it would, what it would take to, from an engineering perspective, on a long-term basis, to fix the town of Cleveland, so it is not coming out into the Clinch River, so I need a motion for approval on this.
I'll make that motion.
We have a second, Steve. Yep, Steve has been listening in for me on call, calls, and we've had weekly conference calls with this. Any discussion? Are all those in favor of going on with the grant agreement for the P E R? Oris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes.
Next on the county administrator reports, I mean, request is the approval of the Russell County's fiscal year twenty twenty-one audit engagement letter with Robinson, Farmer, and Coxon Associates, our annual auditor for, to perform the audit. This is an agreement, a letter that sets forth the terms and the conditions of the engagement. I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Are all those in favor of doing our audit engagement letter? Oris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes.
Ma'am, that concludes the county, county administrator reports and requests.
Okay, Katie, with the, Lonzo, with I D A information, do we need, does Steve need to make a motion for that?
I have to say about if you want to consider it under matters presented by the board.
Forward.
To approve the.
One.
I think it's a letter of intent.
Letter of intent.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the, I guess it's more, it's a million dollars, not to exceed a million dollars. With First Bank and Trust, the I D A needs to do the improvements to the government center, the roof, and for the Department of Health and the extension services.
All right, do we have a second today?
I'll second it.
Any discussion?
I just want to let the public know that the debt service will be taken care of through the appropriations of that, of the.
of that, of the rental income.
Yeah, the rental income will cover any kind of debt service.
Yes, far exceeded.
It'll be just like the D S S is doing that, their contract, their annual contract will help offset the rent that they will be charging, all right? All those in favor of this uh, li- letter for the loan not to exceed a million dollars, Oris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
And Rebecca, yes. All right, David, any matters presented by the board?
Yes, I just want to say, it's, it's been a great pleasure serving on the regional I D A. I wanted to let everybody know that uh, we, we have made a lot of great accomplishments and was able to work towards the first actual regional revenue sharing agreement for the first industry that located in Russell County. I'm proud of that accomplishment, it was voted on by all three boards in Buchanan and Taffel and Russell County, and we landed our first industry, what my hope and prayer is, is that we can land about ten to fifteen more of them and be able to move forward, and my work will not stop just because I'm off this board.
Steve, you have a second?
Yes, ma'am, I want to see if our next meeting can be moved up to the government, up to the conference center and open to the public. You know, we've had a, I've gotten, I can't tell you how many text messages and emails from high-risk citizens who didn't get to comment tonight. So, and I think, you know, just having them, you know, have them in the room, you know, would be available, you know? And, and we're going to have to, on these executive sessions, we're going to have to limit the time on, you know, either that or come out of session for these public hearings, I don't know about. Public hearing was scheduled for six o'clock, and it was five after seven before it kind of started, so I don't know, you know, about our advertisement, what that says. So, you know, we're just going to have to be a little more strict about what we do. And if we have to come out of executive session and go back in later on, then that's, that's what we're going to have to do.
Tim, you have anything to say?
Uh, ma'am, what's Steve say? We need to move to the conference center and be a little more careful about exec, and we had some stuff around on us late, and that, that's what caused it, but still, that's not fair to the people that were waiting.
Sitting waiting, that's exactly right, Oris, anything to say?
I'd say, let's have a good P A system, and then, it's been across my attention for all months ago, and I keep getting it. I have been asked as a possibility that we can let disabled veterans be tax-free on one vehicle. That's a, that's a big thing, because I'm going to tell you, I'm not against the veteran to want, want levy, a new breed Cadillac or Volkswagen or something cheaper, we have to have, allow a certain amount of money within a total exempt, will we not? If we done that, they say so many other counties do that, you know, sometimes they want to compare us to other counties, other counties, but sometimes we can't, we can't do our own county, we're a different county, we can have different levies.
Thank you. Carl, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to congratulate all the twenty twenty seniors this year.
Yes, bless their hearts, it's been a difficult year for them, Lou?
Uh, no, ma'am, I'm through.
All right, thank, okay, yes, first off, I do want to apologize to those folks that did come and to tell them that we had two people come that we did not even know they were coming to executive session, and they took up lots of time, but it's business, and I do apologize to you, so. And as far as meeting next month, we had already planned that, Lonzo had already gotten the room ready. We will be meeting in the big conference room, that had already been planned, because we just, this was a reconvened meeting, and for those folks that did come, I do apologize to you. I'm sorry, but we did have two people that came in and took up most of the time with, in executive session. And I want everybody to have a safe evening, and we'll see you, our next meeting will be July the sixth. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Madam Chair, since you are going to move the meeting from the regular locations, but I would move to adjourn it and to have the next meeting at the conference center, I know you all agree that you need to make it in the minutes.
Minutes.
I will make a motion that we have our next meeting at the conference center and have it open to the public.
All right, at five o'clock?
Seven.
For executive session?
I thought for one hour, executive session.
We have, all right, do we have a second to that?
Second.
David, all those in favor, Oris?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Lou?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Rebecca, yes.